And it's six o'clock, Monday, August eighth, twenty twenty-two. Welcome to the Lincolnville Selectmen's Meeting here in the Lincolnville Town Office. Our meetings are broadcast live on local cable, channel twenty-two, and livestreamed on YouTube.
With the, with the exception of this evening where we're having a little technical difficulty.
With the exception of this evening.
So we'll upload it shortly after the meeting.
Yes. We'll go right, before we get going here, Mike, if you could read the quote for the evening?
Sure. "Don't eat anything your great-grandmother wouldn't recognize as food." Michael, pull on.
Thank you very much. We'll get right to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is the Citizens Forum. If anybody has a non-agenda item like to bring to someone's attention, the podium is yours. Please raise your hand and we'll get you duly recognized. Yes.
I just have a question about how to stream. I tried to stream last meeting and YouTube, why YouTube only has videos? And can you livestream on YouTube?
Except for tonight.
I mean, except for tonight?
If things, if things are working appropriately, you should be able to livestream on YouTube.
With the link that's on the town website?
Yes.
Okay, I'll try again.
We'll try to work you through it, Susan.
Not seeing anybody else rushing to the podium. We'll get go on to the next agenda item, the Administrator's Report.
Just a couple of things beyond what's on your agenda. We're probably two-thirds away with putting up winter sand, believe it or not, winter is coming. So we're making progress there. The culverts, the large culvert on Maslin Road and the smaller one on Heel Road have been replaced since we last met. Would anticipate that they'll, before you meet again, they'll be paved back in. Particularly the one on the Heel Road because MDOT is coming on the sixteenth and seventeenth to do a culvert replacement on Hope Road. And they'll be diverting traffic during working hours up around Martin Corner Road and Heel Road. But they believe they'll be able to get the culvert in, in one day, open the road back up for the evening and the night, and then close it again the next day while they pave it back in. So, but you may see their signs around covered over with plastic bags at the moment. So that should be the sixteenth and the seventeenth of next week. And last meeting I reported that I thought we were in lockstep with FEMA on the October storm. And then I got it, promptly got a page and a half request for additional information that we're still working on. So, and we know they need their paperwork.
Yes. I guess that's it besides what's on the agenda.
Okay, anything else? Any questions? Okay, next, next item on the agenda, meetings and announcements.
All meetings are here at the Town Office unless announced otherwise. Conservation Commission is scheduled to meet Thursday, August eleventh, four P.M. The Comprehensive Plan Review Committee meeting for Au- August has been postponed. I see Susan. August seventeenth, seven P.M. here at the Town Office. And the Board of Selectmen meeting next on Monday, August twenty-second, six P.M.
Okay. Any questions, concerns?
Nope.
Next item on the agenda, upcoming community events. Does anybody have any upcoming community events that may not be listed on our? Nothing? David?
I believe the LIA Blueberry Wingding is this Saturday.
Seven to ten.
Seven to ten, I'm being told. At the Lobster Pound?
At the Lobster Shack?
Oh, it's back at the shack. All right. Somewhere at the beach.
Yeah, beach.
Seven, seven, ten Saturday.
Okay, if there's, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Meeting minutes for July twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two for approval.
I move the board approve the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes as presented.
Motion? Do you want to hear a second?
Well, I, I saw one line we might want to edit.
Okay. Can I get a second?
A second, yeah.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, line one oh nine. Where that is? It's, uh, says, um, well, I can't find it.
One oh?
One oh nine. See where it says, uh, yep, after the board finished their meeting, Dr. Strout came in. Uh, I think they meant to say after the board finished their discussion, because it wasn't after the meeting. You know what I'm saying?
It's at the end of the agenda.
Yeah, so at the end of the agenda item, however you want to put that, but it wasn't at the end of our meeting. So it's kind of a little mis, it's kind of misleading, I don't know.
Do we want to word that, David?
We'll, we'll change that. I understand your concern, because it sounds like it came after the meeting was over, but it came later in the meeting.
Yeah, get moved to the end of the agenda.
Yeah, we can.
Taken up at the end of the agenda or something like that.
That's it. That's all I got.
So your motion is good with the change. And you'll second it with?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been seconded. We've had discussion. Is there anything else? Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda, Board Committee and Commission Appointments. Item number six. It's like we have a few people looking to, that have submitted some community interest forums, form for some of our committees. David, am I wrong, or did we have a couple of these before us, the last meeting?
You did. I don't know if you want to do them in order or jump around, but David is not here.
Okay.
And I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know who you are, but you're not Rosetta. No?
Oh.
The woman to your right.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so neither of?
Neither the Stebbins are here. Um, Tony, Tony's not coming because he's a reappointment.
Yes.
And then Lita Stot-?
Stoutenberg.
Stoutenberg is here. Sorry. A little disjointed.
So we should move, uh?
Yes, so, yeah, if we could, if we could, if I could have a motion on Mr. Offizor.
Chair, I move to appoint Tony Offizor as a regular member to the Lake of Ponds Committee with a term expiring June twenty twenty-three.
Second. Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? Mr. Offizor is, continues to be a member of the Lake of Ponds Committee. Okay, so these, these other two, the two that I just spoke of, I think will, uh?
I probably won't put them on the agenda until they tell me they're able to come.
Correct. That would be good. And Mr.?
No, Ms., Ms. Ms. Stafford.
David Stebbins?
David's not here.
Yeah, and he, he needs to fill out his form. Okay. So we have a Lita Stoutenberg.
Correct.
Would you like to come to the podium and tell us who you are and tell us why you want to volunteer at the town? We'd like to meet you.
Yeah.
I'm Lita Stoutenberg. I came here just over a year ago from Oregon, following my daughter and her family. And I have been in the accounting field for a very, very long time. I retired from Tiger Twalton School District, which was a large school district in Oregon. And I still work for a mortgage company doing bookkeeping here for them, and they're still in Portland, Oregon, and stuff. So I love accounting. And John Williams, which is a neighbor to my daughter and son-in-law, um, my son-in-law, I guess, was talking about me with the budget committee business brought up with John and was like, John said, we need to get you in there. And he saw me on the street following my grandsons on their bike and stopped me and said, would you please do this? So I said, okay. And that way I can get to know the community better too, and the community people better, because I have not met very many people so far.
Well, thank you very much for showing interest in helping the town. We have quite a few vacancies. Are there any questions from the board before we?
Uh, just to get the pronunciation of your first name.
Lita.
Lita, thanks. Okay.
If there's no other questions, if I could have a motion?
I move to appoint Lita Stoutenberg to the Budget Committee as a regular member with a term expiring at the next annual town meeting to be held in June twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Item number seven, request regarding two thousand seventeen personal property tax of James Rutland. Holly, would you like to come to the podium and tell us what's going on?
Sure.
Thank you.
I am Holly Rutland, and I am the wife of James Rutland, who passed away January seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. And he owned and operated Crossroads Construction. And Crossroads Construction's final tax return was done in twenty fourteen, and the business was closed. This May eleventh, I received, so Jim's been gone for almost a year and a half. And May eleventh of this year, I received a bill from the town for personal property tax for Crossroads Construction for the year of twenty seventeen. And, um, so I emailed David, um, I don't know if, if the email's part of the, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I emailed David and corresponded with him a few times since May twelfth. Um, just explaining Crossroads Construction situation and Jim's situation, and that this is the first time I had seen this bill in twenty twenty-two. And that I was asking for his advice on how to get this, um, how to deal with the bill that I had. And I was here tonight to see if I could ask the town to zero out that account and, um, put this property tax, twenty seventeen property tax to rest.
David, if this was, thank, thank you, Holly. David, if this was back in twenty seventeen, it's, it's personal property taxes that are in arrears. How would we bill? Would that be delivered, certified mail?
Yeah, well, people get personal property taxes, similar to your regular real estate property taxes, back in two thousand seventeen. And the notice that Holly received was a past due reminder.
Yeah.
Trying to be a friendly note that's just generated along with several, you know, dozen or hundreds others. And so that's kind of.
Yeah. Although, although it may be the first time Mrs. Rutland has seen this, safe to say that someone else has seen it previous to her, us trying to get notification to the tax, taxpayer.
I, I would. I'd be shocked if other, I mean, the bill went out, obviously.
Yeah.
And in fact, in two thou, the two thousand eighteen bill, the board issued an abatement because the business had closed, but we didn't address the sixteen, I mean, the seventeen.
Yeah.
Bill at that time.
Okay. So. As you, as you can see in your packet, the law doesn't allow for a tax bill to be canceled. The law does, however, municipal officers discharge the tax from obligation to collect unpaid personal property taxes. The amount is, you know, too small burdensome to collect economically and authorizes a municipal treasurer to remove those taxes from the municipal books. What, what is, what is everybody's thought to that?
Well, I'm guessing that according to Holly's letter, Jim's estate has been closed. Businesses, the, the business is done. So those two things, I would think, would make it to, would make it burdensome to economically get that, to reopen all that.
Yeah.
So I, I would think, because of that, we'd be, we'd be complying with the law.
Yeah. That's, that's how I felt on that. Okay. All right. All's I need is a motion then.
I move the board find the twenty seventeen personal property taxes of James Rutland doing business as Crossroads Construction to be burdensome to collect economically, discharge the tax collector from the obligation to collect and authorize a municipal treasurer to remove those taxes from the municipal books.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes. You're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the, on the agenda, the Community Heart and Soul Project Update.
Yes, good evening. I'm Susan Silverio, and I'm the Chair of the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee. And it was brought before you last meeting, a resolution to support the Community Heart and Soul, and there were some questions. So I wanted to be here tonight to give you kind of a brief overview and history and address any questions you have. I gave you lots of materials in your packets, and I could just touch on those, walk you through really quickly. Um, so the first, the, the resolution, we'll put aside until a little bit later. But I wanted to give you a little review. The Comprehensive Plan Review Committee was appointed last June or spring and then, and June. We've been working for a little over a year now. So our task is, a chartered committee is to update, review and update the comprehensive plan, which is, hasn't been updated since two thousand six, so it's six years obsolete. It's the foundation of our ordinances. So this is a concern and an important task that we want to do diligently. What we've been doing is, first of all, we have applied for the data from the state that can actually update the data and the plan. That wasn't released to us until June, so we're just now getting to the place where we can start using that data. We met with you as a select board to review your assignments of, twelve, sixteen years ago. So we have that workshop. Uh, we will take all that information we got from you then. I put a little, that's one of the items here, is those takeaways from that workshop on May twenty-fourth. It's a recording that's now on the town website. So that's just one of the things we'll be doing. When we started to ask how we could, um, work with this plan, the advice I was given was that, um, there's two parts to this. Part of it is the, the data and the analysis of the trends. Another part of it is the, the vision statement from the town and the public participation. It's kind of two pieces. There's a couple of ways of doing that, and some towns have used tools that gives products, like surveys, and you get polls, and you get data, as people ask, you know, they ask questions. But I was warned by the State Planning Office that sometimes these questions can be leading questions, and they give you misinformation. It divides people rather than visioning a solution. They ask a question like, you know, would you like to have big box stores in Lincolnville? And people say, no, yes. And so that doesn't really offer you a solution or a way, a vision for how to proceed. So I wanted to, to point out to you this manual, this chapter two, Comprehensive Plan Manual. It's the se- um, second chapter is on public participation. I wanted to just touch on a few things here, and they were highlighted in your packet. To meet the goals contained in Maine's Growth Management Act, goals like preventing development sprawl, promoting affordable housing, safeguarding prime farmland, soils, forests, access to the coast for marine industries, means confronting difficult issues. Let's skip down to citizen participation is a process through which those with a stake in the community have had enough to say in the plan that they will support or at least won't oppose putting its recommendations into action. We don't want to waste our time and come up with a brilliant idea that the town, that townspeople will reject. So we'd like to really take our time. Next page says, we need to get the right people involved in the actual planning. White people include the official town family, that is, members of town boards and departments. We will be interviewing all the town committees to see what their work is and what their goals are and what their assignments were in the last plan. Guideline number two, don't think of public participation as a one-time task to complete, like a public hearing or workshop. It's a continuous process. And it goes on to say, it's tempting to write a comprehensive plan in a straight line. First, inventory and analyze, identify issues and goals, then propose policies, then get public input, then make final recommendations to municipal offices or town meeting for consideration and adoption, or not, as we know. So the next page is, there's cycles, public involvement. There's defining the issues and problems. We already have a list, a laundry list of things that we know are of concern to people. Stage two is set a vision, goals. Stage three is consider the options. What are the actual possibilities for addressing these things? What are the action items? Number, stage four, choose options and policies. But this is a cyclical process. And the guideline number three suggests that we approach the public in multiple ways. And guideline number four says, don't discuss, discuss solutions until there is wide agreement on the problems. And that page, on page ten, ends by saying, if the comprehensive plan is worth its salt, it will tackle controversial issues, issues that involve property rights, growth areas with higher densities of development, preserving rural lands and natural resources, and so forth. Last line on that page. In fact, it's not unusual that about half of the time allotted to a comprehensive plan to gathering and analyzing the information needed to shine light on issues and carrying out the discussions, including interactions with the public. Five, decide where the town wants to be in ten or twenty years is central to comprehensive plan. We don't want this to be the Committee Heart and Soul. We would like this to be the Community Heart and Soul. The last page says, go to the public, hold a meeting in local church, church, restaurants, community schools, local function rooms, serve refreshments. People may come to see their neighbors or for dessert. And the last line is, I wanted to, as a takeaway, proceeding in a high involvement fashion requires a commitment of resources and upfront acknowledgement. The process will require a significant amount, significant investment of time. Most experts agree that the investment of time throughout the process to include the public will pay off in less controversy at the end. In all cases, effective citizen participation requires the governing body of your community and the Comprehensive Planning Committee to invite and allow public influence over final recommendations of the comprehensive plan. And those tools include visioning sessions and involving children, which appeals to me, having been a teacher of mixed-age kindergarten for thirty years. And I will warn you, my husband tells me that I speak to everybody as if they were six years old. So I apologize in advance, but I want to assure you, I have a very high regard for six-year-olds. They catch on really quickly. So I want to continue here. The State Planning Office has required elements. Number one is a vision statement. Number two is public participation summary. So this is what we're, we're charged to do. So tonight, Kat Ingram is here, and she is the coach for Community Heart and Soul that has been working with us. We met Kat back in January when we first started looking for consultants to help us with this process. And we were referred, the only local person, local consultant, was Jane LaFleur, who's worked with the town so ably for some, for so many years. She no longer works for, as a private consultant. She works only with Community Heart and Soul. And when she told me about the process, I thought, this sounds really exciting, exactly what we need to engage the public. So it's not just a few people telling everybody else what we think is a good idea. We, we have a couple of videos we want you to see. There's links in your packet. If you have five minutes at home, I really encourage you to look at those videos. The one is a town manager from Bucksport. And if anybody has driven through Bucksport in recent years and seen the transformation of that city, that is primarily due to the heart and soul process. The other one is Gardner, the town manager, mayor of Gardner. And she speaks very eloquently about what that did to transform the, um, the level, the positivity in their city and their approach to problems, how they do it together now. So I know the question you had as a board was, you know, we have ten thousand dollars that's been allocated through the budget process and at a town meeting, and this is now available. The, the beautiful thing about it is that the Community Heart and Soul Foundation is prepared to match that with ten, another ten thousand dollars matching funds. I wanted to show you the draft budget. We decided when we had our working session, not to be confused with the committee meeting. I want, we've updated those minutes, so you can see that that was a working session. People who just wanted to get together to see how we can make this happen. We're coming to you tonight to make sure the best practices are in place. But the, we did decide, there's several ways of approaching this. One is by all virtual, and we all, all had enough zooming for a while, and we also know the dangers of zooming, public things. The other option was hybrid meetings, which would be part in-person coaching, part hi, um, zooming. And we all agreed that we would like to have the option of contracting with Kat Ingram as the state of Maine coach for Community Heart and Soul as all in-person trainings, because these trainings, in order for us to do this, we'll have to, those who are, who are willing to be a, a team, an initial team to make this happen, there'll be five sessions, as I understand, with, with packets, thirty-page packets. We need to really learn how to approach people with open-minded questions, not questions that are going to divide or polarize our community. So part of that is interviewing people and finding a way to reach everyone, not just the people who are courageous enough to come out to a town meeting or to a town office. And that includes young people as well. So this budget shows you that that all in-person training would be sixteen thousand dollars. And over a two-year period, project coordination is usually ten thousand. I'm willing to do this. I, I really believe in this. I'd be willing to do this as a volunteer. That'll save us ten thousand dollars. So. So with the matching funds and the in-kind donations, those resources include in-kind donations, not money. If there are donations that are given, that would be great. But I'm just thinking, we can find places to meet and we can do potlucks. We can find a way to, that's how I've always worked, is kind of grassroots potluck approach. So the way I figure, we still have, with all administration costs, we still have a couple thousand dollars left for, if we want to do refreshments at an event or something like that. So that's the budget. There's a mile, there's milestones here. So you'll see, um, the, the, it's not a product like you would get from a survey. It's a process, like the, the manual keeps emphasizing. They are open-ended questions, not either or questions. And so these open-ended questions have already started to engage people in thinking about what we can do together. And our town has a wonderful history of doing things together, from whether that's rebuilding the Grange three times after it burned over the years. I'm talking 200 years ago now. Or more recently, moving the old schoolhouse across the road to make a library. Our town knows how to engage each other and do things together. So, um, so that's the, that's our goal. That's our, the process we'd like to have you on board with. And Kat is here to answer any questions about how she would work.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I'm Catherine Kat Ingram. I live in Perrin, Maine, if that's important for the record. Susan did a very wonderful and eloquent job of summing up what Community Heart and Soul is all about. I'm just going to take a little bit of a step back to explain my process and, and kind of role as a coach in that. Community Heart and Soul, as Susan stated, is a process. There are concrete steps along the way and milestones that each town that goes through the process hopes to meet. It takes two years or so to go through the four phases of Community Heart and Soul, although a lot of the work for the first phase is actually, um, already in place here if, if you do decide to do it with regards to organizing a team and finding a project coordinator. With Susan on board, that takes a lot of the work out of it, which is amazing. As a coach, I help facilitate the process. So every phase kicks off with a large workshop where we do an overview of the phase. We break down each of the components of the work, um, work products, and what we have as Community Heart and Soul for tools to help engage the public, keep the team organized, and motivate volunteers throughout the entire two years. Susan will be the local person on the ground here, and I will work closely with her and with anyone else who would be part of that team. I'm using the word team, but it can be committee or whichever word you choose to, to use there. Would be doing the actual community engagement and participation work here in Lincolnville. I hope that just kind of clears that up a little bit. So I'm available as a consultant and as a resource. I am currently working with four other towns in Maine and one in Massachusetts. We've been doing Community Heart and Soul in different roles since 2016, when I worked as a project coordinator in the Bethel Regional. It was a Muhusak Heart and Soul. So it's a five-town initiative, which was their consolidated school district. And since then, I have been in different positions with the foundation. Currently, I work as an independent contractor. So I contract with Community Heart and Soul to help towns that are interested, find out a little bit more about the process, get them started if they would like to learn more, and then help with the seed grant application process. And then from there, it's up to the towns. Part of the requirements for the seed grant, there's a lot. David, thank you for spending your time going through that. I hope it was helpful.
Yeah, it was.
One of the requirements for that $10,000 is that you contract with a, a coach from Community Heart and Soul. I'm the only one in Maine. There are other folks available, and there are resumes and names and information online, so you can, you know, do some more research there if you'd like to. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the process, about how it may play out here in Lincolnville. Yeah, I just.
I've, I've got no questions. Mike, what do you, you?
Yeah, so it's, so based on your experience with other communities and timeframe-wise, if we're weeks away from s, doing a, a matching fund or whatever, what's the timeline look like as we start to look at two years and then embedding this into a comprehensive plan? Some of that you might be able to speak to, some of that you might not be able to.
So the, the guidelines on the, the milestones are general. And of course, things depend upon the excitement, the energy, the number of volunteers that you have in the town, and how many, you know, what you have for resources, not just financial resources, but, you know, human capital. So just to get it started, it depends with the process that you decide to go through. It could be as quick as a month or so. It, it may be longer. I think that's dependent upon people here. Generally, once towns get up and running, the first phase is pretty short with all of the work that has been done to acquire a seed grant. And then the second phase, which is where the actual community engagement and civic participation takes place, can take as long as you want it to. I find communities generally take six to eight months. It's been a little bit longer during the pandemic because most of the interviewing and story collecting has been done in small groups or one-on-one. So the larger scale events haven't necessarily been available for, for communities to take advantage of, you know, capturing like 50, 60 people at one time. So the two years lines up pretty well with my understanding of when you hope to have the comprehensive plan finished.
Yeah, I do have a question. Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm looking, I'm looking at your abbreviated resume here. Yeah. And it looks as if you have kind of a, maybe a traditional background in education in, in land use planning, eh? Can we say that? And, but at some point, you decided to go with heart and soul. So obviously, you're with them now, so you think it works. You think it's a good planning tool for towns. But if you could like imagine yourself going back as a land use planner, traditional, why did you think that heart, Community Heart and Soul would be an effective tool, I guess, for towns?
Yeah, so as a traditional land use planner, I've seen a lot of plans fail. I've seen a lot of work, engagement, money, and time put into plans that just sit on shelves and get dusty. I've also seen a lot of communities dissatisfaction with opportunities to participate. Oftentimes, for whatever reason, folks don't want to come to a meeting. They may not be comfortable, it may not be conducive to their schedules. So Community Heart and Soul offers a different way to engage with your community, and community is a bit more broad than just people of voting age who live in town. It can include business owners, it can include children, seasonal residents, that's up to you, or up to the local team, how much information they'd like to, you know, gather from other people. But I like it because of the opportunities and avenues to kind of test different ways of community engagement and sort of see what works. And what you end up with are people who are excited about ideas and generally galvanized around something together. So I see a lot more, um, you know, action items that end up going to different organizations and nonprofits and being done by the actual people that had the ideas. And to me, as a planner, that's exciting because, you know, what better way to love your town and to give back to it than get on board or something like that.
Gotcha, yeah, thanks.
Anything else? Do you have anything else? Susan, do you have anything else? You'd have to step out.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I think that covers, you know, all the background I wanted to give you. I know you had some very specific concerns, and I know David has worked overtime trying to address these and find a way forward, how we can work together as a committee, as a town, and as an initiative of many people who are already excited and involving in a working session, ready to become a team. So how all those mesh, I've had, my experience has always been in nonprofits, so I don't have, not really facile with town government. So David has been working to try to bring me up to speed, to let me figure out how this works, and then how we can work together is the question.
And that's, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything else because that's what our next process, uh, next part of the process is, is to get into the conversation about what the recommend is, recommendation is for our path forward. So, uh, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming before us. This is exciting, very exciting for this town.
I agree.
David?
Oh, good.
We have some notes. Let's talk.
Yeah, I'm, I'm always the guy that gets to throw cold water on things and make people stuck on municipal process. But, um, having delved into particularly the, uh, the grant guidelines put out by Community Heart and Soul, there are three. And when I misspeak, not if, but when I misspeak, somebody feel free to go, hey, you've gone crazy. The, um, heart and soul money that we'll hopefully obtain can go to three different entities, or it can be three different classifications of applicants. It can be a local government, can be a nonprofit, it could just be a citizens group. If it's, and then somebody has to be the fiscal sponsor. So somebody has, some entity has to be willing to accept that money and then dole it out based on, you know, when the bills need to be paid. For a town, um, if the board wants to, I mean, townspeople have appropriated up to $10,000 for the board to dispense for, um, comprehensive plan, which the budget was for Community Heart and Soul. The town can do that easily enough. We're set up to apply for grants, receive grants. They can, um, we have town meeting approval for that process. In addition to that, uh, the state statute allows the town to get grant funds to supplement a program that you appropriated money for. Well, you appropriated money for the comprehensive plan, for Community Heart and Soul. So we're set up town-wise to accept those monies if we choose to apply. A nonprofit can do the same thing. It wouldn't be necessarily associated with the town. It could be, I'll just pick an entity. The Historical Society could say, we want to sponsor a Community Heart and Soul process, which is fine. Then the question comes, do you, as the Board of Selectmen, wish to contribute the $10,000 that the town raised for your expenditures for this purpose, to give that to the Historical Society to do this process? It's, yeah?
Sorry, David. I'm not certain that you need to have all the money in one pool.
Yeah, okay.
I believe that, I may be incorrect here. I believe that Community Heart and Soul, the foundation, needs a letter saying that the town has the funds as the match, but they don't necessarily need to be administered by the same entity.
Entity, yeah. I mean, a different, the Historical Society could find somebody else to be a fiscal sponsor, somebody else to accept the money, and we could dole it out to them. Then the other process, the other possibility was a local citizens group. Unaffiliated with one or nothing necessarily, besides the fact they're all interested with, you know, there's no formal structure. There's no IRS 501(c)(3) designation, or the state of Maine hasn't said, you know, you exist, town of Lincolnville. Then you still need to have the fiscal sponsor to get the money, to receive the money from Heart and Soul and from anybody else's funding. You may recall, I don't know when we did a steep one recall because he wasn't on the board then, but we had a citizens group that came to the select board, said, we'd like to funnel a project for the state park through the town, have donations come to the town, and then you would issue those out. And you got a couple-page memo from the town attorney on why she didn't really think that was a good idea, and if you wanted to do that, to take that to town meeting and ask to do that. From my perspective, in terms of ease of accomplishing the goal, which is to get going with the, with the heart and soul process, now remember, I come from the municipal model, so it's easy for me to say the easy way, is for the town to be the applicant, to apply for the grant funds through Community Heart and Soul. We're set up to receive that. And then have an oversight group that would help with the logistics of it, if nothing else, to, you know, make sure that the public knows when the meetings are, find the meeting space, coordinate potlucks, or whatever, you know, whatever the group wants to do. But in order for that to occur, um, through the municipal model or local government, you all have to, one, agree to apply for it, and two, set up some sort of oversight structure for that, whether it be five members of the Board of Selectmen, an existing committee like the Comprehensive Plan Committee, setting up a separate team. There seemed to be a fair amount of interest from the community, based on the meeting I went to in the school, for, um, for the effort. I think, and the Comprehensive Plan Committee has a parallel track of a lot of work to do. I was of the mindset that it would, and my recommendation was that you all agree to apply for the money, write a letter of support, might have to tweak the last paragraph a little bit, and then put together a team that you all would appoint, and they would o, oversee, so you didn't have to, the effort. Susan's volunteered to coordinate. There's a perfect chair right there. And I think there are others, and it, and it doesn't have to, you know, so many of our committees are relatively rigid in nature. You know, the planning board, there shall be five members, two alternates, staggered term, you know. This being an ad hoc committee or an ad hoc team can be a little more, I don't want to use the word loose, but I can't think of a good adjective, a little less rigid, and still accomplish the work and not seem like everything's under the thumb of, you know, Dave Kenny, because I don't want it under my thumb. So that's kind of where I was. There are many ways to skin the cat, and if you want to choose another course of action, I'm sure they're ready to go.
I'm not sure I want to.
I got a question, David.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. So if we were to choose a, like that, that last model, excuse me, let's recommend a, a working group, a subcommittee, an ad hoc, subcommittee, would they, would they still be subject to freedom of information?
Oh, yes.
They still have to be a public, not small, all those things.
Anything that is under the auspices of the Board of Selectmen, any, any group you create certainly falls under Means Freedom of Access Act. You know, we would gladly post the stuff on the website for meeting dates, and if there was certain notices that needed to go on, like we did for the first meeting. Yeah, if it's a unaffiliated group with the town, if it's the, I don't mean to keep picking on the Historical, if it's the Lincolnville Sewer District, well, no, they fall under the act. But if it's the Historical Society, they could have, you know, secret meetings on the second floor and the LIA, and, you know, nobody's invited. But you don't get, you don't end up with a product out of it, or the process of where you want to be. Did I go crazy, Susan? Kat?
No, but the next question would be, so where do these people?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
The next question that would follow, which I'm still not sure about, is how, how are these people? I mean, we had 40 people at the school for the introduction that Kat gave. We had another 14 at the community building who wanted to come and be part of the working session to start an initial team. So how are those people chosen? If you need to appoint them, do they need to come to you and show their interest, like somebody joining a committee?
Yeah, ultimately, depending on what the team was named, um, they, I would foresee the board would want to get a community interest form. Most of you all know, community interest form is primarily contact information and a little blurb of why you want to be involved. You know, if it took you five minutes to fill out. So that we can actually find these people and make sure they're aware that the meetings are going on and that you all could get together and choose your own chair or project coordinator to make. and make sure they're aware that the meetings are going on and that you all could get together and choose your own chair or project coordinator to make it all happen.
So in a sense, you'd be recognizing a core group of people that would be something of a nu-, I'm trying to understand, kind of a nucleus for this big, maybe more, a little more amorphic, um, uh, um, initiative. But there'd be a group that you would recognize as committed, appointed, um,
People that are gonna make it all happen.
Yeah.
And just, um, yeah, it, they wouldn't necessarily have to be a rigid number of people. It could be a little more open-ended. I'm thinking, I think the Lakes and Ponds Committee can have like twenty-one members. I can't imagine trying to coordinate that, but they could. Um, but a group so that if somebody says, comes into the town office and says, well, who do I talk to about the meeting I missed, you know, three weeks ago? We know who to send them to. And when's the next one, you know, kind of, the people that are gonna do the, the bulk of the work.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be just the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee, which has plenty to do already. So this gives us another group of people to work with.
Yeah, I mean, it could be, oh, it, it could be the same group, it could have overlapping members, it could be totally separate. This all depends on how you all want to set it up. But, um, as you said, I think the, the Comprehensive Plan Committee has a fair amount of work already on its plate. And a parallel group only brings in more people to have discussion about trying to make the community better. What's wrong with that? And, um, I think overlap would be good, because ultimately, um, you know, we're, we're hoping that the vision that comes out of this gets morphed into the comprehensive plan as an integral part of that.
Definitely.
So it's good to have at least a member or two that are, and I'm sure the Comprehensive Plan Committee peoples, knowing them all, will come to all the heart and soul meetings.
Yeah.
He answered it after I raised my hand.
Thank you, David.
Yeah?
So it seems like your recommendation is, uh, the path forward. And we discussed that here tonight. And if, if we're all good with any questions or concerns that we've had, entertain a motion with that.
I'd ask one question.
Yep.
Not to throw a monkey wrench in the work, but you might ask Cat and Susan if they're okay with, you know, Dave Kenny's vision of this, or if they see potential hurdles that won't work, or
Okay.
Ways to tweak it, make it move, work better.
I just have one question, which may actually be two or three. Sorry, so Community Heart and Soul works when you can have many people involved. By structuring it this way, would it create a barrier for folks who maybe just want to participate and do one small part of the project?
I hope.
Would they all have to apply, or would people come and go?
The, the, as you referred to it, the team, the, the steering group or committee or team or whatever, is really just a function of, um, you know, the, the core that's going to push to make sure that all the, you know, the lights come on and there's not a, a basketball game in the middle of the gym when we wanted to have three hundred kids in, or three hundred people from town having a meeting. No, at, um, we, I don't know about routinely, but, um, we attempt to be inclusive and not exclusive, if that makes any sense. Um, it's a little more structured than probably, uh, Heart and Soul might ideally like. But I think really the, the effort is just to make sure that there's a lot of worker bees, and then there's the people that come in with their pollen and jarret.
And then I think the second question, I'm sorry, there may be a third, probably not. For the second part, the community engagement component of Community Heart and Soul, depending upon the questions that this group of folks come up with to ask residents, sometimes people share information that they may not necessarily want to be public. Are all of the interviews subject to that Freedom of Information Act?
If you provide them to us, yes.
Okay.
Um, if you provide, if you provide a summary of that to us, yes. Anything, basically, anything that comes in the front door, or email, or whatever, is open and available for public inspection unless it's, you know, is personnel-related or something like that. Um, but if you as the coach consultant get information and somebody says, well, I don't want you to use my name. You can use a story, but don't, you know, don't say Dave Kenny said.
Okay.
Um, as long as you don't identify it as Dave Kenny, we'll never know.
I just wanted to make sure, because so much of this process is about building relationships and trust. So having the option to participate anonymously while not preferred just makes some people more comfortable.
Yeah.
Understood.
That's all.
Is there anything else?
Susan?
It's great to have an audience.
It's not my meeting, but Susan, you think you can make that work?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Do you think you can make this work?
It would be great to have a select person on the board, on the team.
I guess I would, I would volunteer to do that, however, I would anticipate problems. And I don't know if they would come, where I might have to accuse myself of some decisions being made by the board, if I'm a member of that subcommittee. Whatever we're calling it, and maybe that's, maybe that would never arise, I don't know if I'm making too, too big a deal out of it or not. But, uh, if it's, if it does arise, we cross that when we get to the.
The, the ad hoc nature of the team is advisory. Even if the, even the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee, they don't have any
Obligation.
Authority to bind the town to something. Um, it's, it's, um, you know, creating the vision is ultimately something that the community is looking to do. And it has to feed up from the community, and then, and then the community will have to accept it. There might be an opportunity, uh, if a select board member, uh, participated, where if you're not comfortable, just, like you said, recuse yourself and say, you know, this is really a board decision. But I, I don't see a lot of decisions coming out of this. It's more information and getting to the vision and, and the process of having something left to continue on when Cat goes back to wherever she goes.
Once we're up and running, we'll be up and running. But it, I, it would be helpful that there'd be awareness on the part of the select board, you know, so information, as, so more, the, the role be more of liaison, you know, as a, as, um, as a rep-, not necessarily representative at all, but, um, conduit for information.
Yeah, if the board, uh, in the future thinks it's appropriate, maybe we could have a standing agenda item, like the broadband update, when this ball gets rolling. Uh, where there'd be, uh, Community Heart and Soul update every so often.
Yep.
And I would want to do provide that.
If there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion on this.
You mean the, like, the real long one? Yeah, well, I'll, I'll start it. Okay, so, I move that the town administrator work with the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee. To prepare, to prepare a charge that would create an ad hoc Heart and Soul Committee. This primary purpose would be leading the effort to further engage and involve community members in, in identifying what they love most about our community, what future they want for it, and how to achieve it. Further, I move that the town administrator and the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee revise the resolution and support to reflect this course and that the charge and revised resolution and the draft grant application be submitted for board consideration.
Second.
Thanks.
Moved and seconded.
Did you, did you get all that?
Was the microphone on there? I, I hope someone do it again.
Okay, that was moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, good. All those in favor? Motion passes.
Good.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, thank you guys.
That was great, very excited.
Our next agenda item, uh, property tax commitment.
I'm curious.
Hey, Vern.
I move that we suspend our meeting as the Board of Selectmen and reconvene as the Board of Assessors.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? We are now the Board of Assessors of the Town of Lincolnville.
Good evening, assessors.
Hey, Drew.
Um, a couple old hands, a new member of the board. This is the one big day for assessors, if you had to pick a day. Uh, this is it. There are really four activities that you will do, um, in signing some papers that have been prepared for you. Uh, the first one is that you are providing, uh, written notice to the public in general that you have prepared what is called a true and perfect list of the assessments of each person and what their share is to pay to fund the municipal education and county government for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, that's called the Assessor's Certification of Assessment, so you're certifying that you have done that. That is sitting on Kayla's desk, uh, it came out of the printer about, uh, an hour ago. The second one that you are doing is your municipal tax assessment warrant, where you are telling your tax collector that you have hereby, are, he is required to collect from each person named in that list, the amount sent forth. And that that amount is committed by you to the tax collector, it's the tax collector's obligation to collect that money. That money consists of the county tax, the municipal appropriation. There is no tax increment financing district in town, so there's no money, uh, to be collected from that. Uh, there is a, a school and education appropriation, and there is the overlay, uh, to equal your total assessments. Your total assessments for this current fiscal year are eight million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two dollars and two cents. Um, the first three items that are funding, I'm sure you're familiar with. The overlay is an amount used, um, as a result of rounding the mill rate. By state law, you can raise up to five percent more than the minimum you need to pay your bills. Uh, you always will have, should have something for overlay, because there will be, you know, people that don't pay their taxes, or people that don't pay timely. And the town, unfortunately, does not have, uh, the opportunity to just, you know, reach into another pocket, take money out to pay the schools' expenses this month if they don't have the money. So, uh, to keep that cash flow going and to allow, um, Kayla to be able to close the books. As your finance person at the end of the fiscal year, uh, everything has to at least equal zero dollars left, or maybe a few dollars left over. And so that's what the overlay is, is supposed to do. Um, you've committed these amounts to David, and then if he doesn't collect them, um, by the due dates, which in this year would be October fifth of twenty twenty-two, and the second, uh, payment would be due April fifth of twenty twenty-three, then he is to add interest at a rate of four percent, beginning on October sixth of twenty twenty-two and April sixth of twenty twenty-three, until such time as the taxes are paid. Um, and then you are also telling the, uh, excuse me, the, the collector, the tax collector, that in addition to collecting those amounts, that the total amount to be collected is six thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, I'm sorry, six million, nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-seven cents, which is the eight point nine million less almost two million dollars of allowable deductions, which include your municipal revenue sharing, your homestead reimbursement, uh, your business equipment tax reimbursement, and other revenue. Other revenue are things like, uh, uh, municipal revenue sharing that you get, uh, from the state, um, excise tax that you collect, which you can use, uh, to fund your road maintenance and things like that. So those are the three documents on the first two, or three statements you're making on the first two pages. Then on the third page, you are also returning to your municipal treasurer, which in this town is also the tax collector. But you're telling them that you have charged the tax collector with collecting a tax on the estates, both real and personal, in the municipality for July one, twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty-three, at zero point zero one five seven mils on a dollar, or fifteen dollars and seventy cents per thousand dollars, on a total taxable valuation of four hundred and forty-four million, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. And what that document is saying is that the tax collector has to go collect it. If the tax collector cannot collect that, at the end of the year to settle everything, they have to give to the treasurer, uh, a disclosure and a list of the money that they did collect. And on the monies that they were unable to collect, they have to show that they have put liens on that property to ensure that the town will receive their money at some point. So that's how that process works, that's what, uh, you are doing tonight when you sign, uh, this paper, or these papers, I should say.
Good. Wow. Thank you for that. Does anybody got any questions?
No?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Board of Assessors approve and sign the Assessor's Certification of Assessment, the twenty twenty-two Municipal Tax Assessment Warrant, the Certificate of Commitment, and the Certificate of Assessment to be returned to Municipal Treasurer as prepared by the Assessor's Agent, establishing the tax rate for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-two to June thirty, twenty twenty-three, at point zero one five seven mils on the dollar. And the due dates of October fifth, twenty twenty-two, and April fifth, twenty twenty-three, with interest at four percent per annum, to be paid on any unpaid portion commencing on October sixth, twenty twenty-two, and April sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion, any questions, concerns?
Nope.
Okay, all those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you.
The papers are, uh, labeled with where you'll sign. I'll give these to David. They're assigned in four places on three pages.
Okay.
I move that we adjourn our meeting as the Board of Assessors and reconvene as the Board of Selectmen.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, I just want to ask, is there anything else you want to discuss with me, as assessors? I can't think of anything.
Okay. Oh, David tells us.
Will you be in tomorrow?
I will be here tomorrow at eight thirty to, uh, take care of the billion files, yes.
Good.
Okay, with all of that being said, all those in favor? We are now back as the, uh, select.
Good night.
Thanks, Vern.
Vern. Thank you, Vern. Next item on the agenda, proposed town charter amendments. Uh, the board instructed, uh, a little while ago, that we move to make the town charter gender neutral and change select, Board of Selectmen to select board, and select men to select persons, and his to his or their. And, um, you have before you the, um, charter with markups. additions are underlined and deletions are struck through. The next step in the process would be to hold a public hearing, if this meets with your satisfaction. Um, which would be at your next meeting. And then assuming that everything still meets with your satisfaction, the next meeting, uh, you would do a order in a special town meeting warrant so that in November, uh, the voters could consider this, along with the other things that'll be on the ballot in November. Because you're required by state statute to have a certain percentage of the voters that voted in the last gubernatorial election. But since we'll be voting on the governor this selection, you'll easily meet that qualification. Happy to explain anything there if you need more.
Yeah, I've got one quick question for David.
Yep.
That is, on page twenty-nine, section, page twenty-nine, section nine, gender neutral?
Hang on, if you would.
Yep. Well, as long as we're doing the amendment, is, uh, does this section still need it in the document? I guess it could hurt to have it in there.
It couldn't hurt to have it in there, but it possibly could be stricken. If you so desire it to be, you let us know and we'll just.
Well, I don't know if it, it seems.
It seems a little redundant now.
It does, it does, yeah, so, but I. It does, it does, yeah. But I don't know if that's having built-in redundancy is such a bad thing either.
The fact, the fact that the document's gender neutral doesn't mean we shouldn't have a statement saying that anything that's ever added to it must be gender neutral.
That's a good point.
Yeah, good point, yeah.
Two different things.
That it?
Yeah.
Do you have anything?
I have a spot of all turkeys.
We've got a few things there. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay. I move that it be ordered that a public hearing on the proposed amendment amendments to the Town Charter is hereby set for the Board of Selectmen meeting of August twenty-two, twenty twenty-two at six thirty P M. At the Lincolnville Town Office, four ninety-three Hope Road, Lincolnville, and be further ordered that the town clerk be and hereby is directed to publish a notice of the hearing including a summary of the proposed amendments and a brief explanation in a newspaper having general circulation in the town of Lincolnville at least seven days before the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
There you go.
Is there, is there any other communication on that? David, do you have anything else?
No.
I'd like to say six thirty.
Yes, that's in your rules of procedure that we set.
Public hearings was six thirty.
Okay. If there's no more questions or concerns, all those in favor? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda. Item number eleven, property tax stabilization for senior citizens. David, do you have anything?
Sure, Selectman Ray at the last meeting asked for some information on this and thought it was a good opportunity for the public to be aware that the state of Maine has instituted a property tax stabilization program for senior citizens known as the Property Tax Stabilization Program, which will, first off, the deadline to apply is December first. You have to apply on an annual basis. You have to be at least sixty-five years old, a permanent resident of Maine, have owned a homestead, Maine homestead for at least ten years and you're eligible for the homestead exemption. So you don't necessarily have to have held the homestead exemption, you just needed to be eligible. What this will do is your twenty twenty, not the taxes that were just committed, but your twenty twenty-three taxes, if you apply and if you qualify, will be frozen at the level you receive this year for a property tax bill. So if you meet those qualifications and you apply and you're accepted into the program, the state's going to make up the difference between your, what we would normally send you for a property tax bill and what it is this year. I would encourage anybody that thinks they meet those qualifications to apply. I will, I will say to the Board, this does come at a bit of a cost, not necessarily in dollars to the town, but in terms of tracking and accepting the applications and verifying qualifications and recording all the information and then when the bills actually get sent out a year from now, we're going to be pulling our hair out trying to make sure that we knew who qualified, who wasn't. And then applying to the state for reimbursement, it's not just, it's not all, you know, roses. There's some work worth it, but.
Thank you, David.
Yep.
Is there any other questions or comments? David, go ahead.
Just so people know, this is available on the town's website. Right on the homepage, on their announcements, there's links to the application, there's links to the explanation. For those like me that aren't tech savvy, we have paper copies available here at the town office. Would gladly hand it to you and have you hand it back. And again, the deadline is December first and you have to apply every year.
Thanks, David. Appreciate it, thanks.
With all that being said, we'll go to the next item on the, on tonight's agenda, the EMS Performance Committee Correspondence.
I'm not quite sure, but you might want to wait for Chair Dunn, who is one of the two members from Lincolnville on the EMS Performance Committee. I would say that the last six months or so have been a tad frustrating trying to get a quorum together. Some of our partnering communities have only appointed one member. So if they're down a member and you have, you know, you've got to get, you have to have five of the eight members together and two communities are down a member, you can't miss too many people or you can cap to cancel a meeting for lack of a quorum. So I believe, I believe in time they're going to appoint their other members, so it should be a little easier to get a quorum, but lately also thought you might want to reach out and remind them.
So I've got a question on that. I'm looking at, at the, the meeting will include, include, it goes down, says town managers or administrators, fire chiefs and first response unit administrators, two select board members from each town, any M H S C E O and C O O, any M H S Rockport Base Manager, any M H S Medical Director and P B M C EMS?
Liaison.
Liaison, whoever. So do we know, has it been because of the partnering towns that we haven't been able to have those meetings, meaning they couldn't get two selectmen from each town to attend, so they can't have a quorum or?
Yeah.
But all the other required people?
Well, we know who the managers and administrators of the four towns are.
Correct.
And we know who the fire chiefs are. And all of the Northeast Mobile Health Service and our ambulance provider, we know who they are and they're more than willing to come to a meeting. They keep sending us information, you know, here's the data. It's just been.
What I'm, what I'm wondering is, is it's two select people from each town. I'm wondering if the criteria can be changed so that only one or the other has to attend the meeting. Would that help?
It, it would. This is, this is an excerpt from our agreement with Northeast Mobile Health.
This is our agreement with them.
This is our agreement with them. And actually, the sole member from the town of Camden reached out to me to say we've, they've only appointed one thus far and could, could it be possible to have one select board member and one citizen? And I said, it's possible. It would require a change to the agreement. You know, the agreements were grew out of the four towns. The last study that Camden and Rockport did and then Lincolnville and Hope were brought in towards that latter part of it. This agreement and this committee setup really came from that, came from the towns, not from Northeast. And now unfortunately, the towns aren't completely following through. But this is too too important not to. I mean, we found ourselves in a situation a number of years ago with our previous ambulance service provider when they got themselves into some financial difficulties that we didn't know about until it was too late. So that was, I mean, we've always, since we've switched, we've always had a performance or a performance review committee on the concept of keeping those lines of communication open. So if there's some challenge that comes up, it can be addressed early on before it becomes catastrophic, so to speak.
So obviously, this is, is just the utmost, utmost of importance to keep the lines of communication open with our participating towns or our partnering towns. But I would like to hear our chair's input or has she had input in this and she's just looking for us to move this along so that?
Well, you could move this along. I mean, she and I have spoken numerous times about the frustrations with this. And I, she didn't say she objected when she reached out to me to say she wasn't going to be at the meeting, so.
Yeah.
Usually if she doesn't find something satisfactory, you hear about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, if, if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion here, so we can just.
I move that the Board Chair be authorized on behalf of the Lincolnville Board of Selectmen to reach out to the towns of Pope, Rockport and Camden regarding the importance of the ambulance service to the citizens and visitors of our communities and the need for member communities to appoint active engaged members to EMS Performance Committee.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there anything else before we vote on this?
No.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Next, next item on the agenda, discussion concerning parking. We got a, everybody saw, you know, a packet, an email from our chair regarding the Lincolnville Beach situation and not, not that it's just Lincolnville Beach, but this is the one that we're getting a lot of complaints about. You know, we only have a certain amount of control down there. Although there is another avenue we can go, which I think is mentioned in the, in her email about the property from the previous sewer facility that has, I don't know if the right term, has been decommissioned or vacated or what it's been, what's happened down there. I know it's no longer in use due to the fact that the new one is not running. David, do you have any, anything else on that?
I believe they just have a pump station on that site and part of the, maybe the chlorination system, but the bulk of that site is just the old plant.
Is there a timeframe dictated by EPA, D E P or whatever of when that needs to be decommissioned and, and moved or do we not know anything?
Not that I'm aware of, but I don't keep track of, I don't keep track of their.
Down there, not too long ago, actually, within the last week, doors are open, you know, I mean, it's, anybody walking by could.
Move in.
Move in.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. We do have a motion. If anybody would prefer to do that.
Yeah, I, I would move that the Board instructs the town administrator to obtain parking ordinances and penalties from similar and neighboring municipalities for the Board to compare and contrast with the town of Lincolnville's ordinance.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there any, any other discussion on that?
Nope.
All those in favor? David, do you think you'll have time to, to put this on the next agenda or will we be out?
Um, it may, it's going to hinge on how many people are on vacation in the office. Cause I'm going to sign, I'm going to sign a task off to somebody else.
Is Melissa back yet?
I don't know.
There she is. Okay, thank you. Uh, the next agenda item and also a park update.
Did you?
Got a question.
What did I do?
Do we have a second part to that that you might want to?
Or did I drop the ball on you?
Yeah, I, 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 I see buried in her and following up on Lady's letter, a suggestive motion to implement her request to get the ball rolling and to contact Lincolnville Sewer District or have
Oh, I see.
Our town administrator do that.
So there's a sec, you, you, this didn't get, didn't get bolded?
It's just not, yeah, it's not bolded. Yeah, down to the last paragraph, last full paragraph, last sentence, last full paragraph.
Okay, so there's a second part to that. Okay, we're going to go back, go back to item number thirteen, discussion concerning parking. We've got a second.
So back in twenty nineteen, we had requested that the town administrator open a dialogue with the Lincolnville Sewer District of their long-range plan regarding the use of the property that now houses the Lincolnville Beach Sanitary Facility wastewater treatment plant. So how did that go?
We, we received a relatively quick rebuff to say, we're really busy trying to put the final throes of our construction project together as volunteers and, you know, we'll get back to you.
Okay.
And I sent them a little reminder and there it sits.
Okay, so in the interest of?
May, it probably fallen off their radar screen, I guess.
In, in, in the interest of seeing if we can have another conversation or a conversation with them, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Board authorize the Board Chair and the Town Administrator to communicate and write in with Lincolnville Sewer District trustees the town's desire to discuss the possible acquisition of the Lincolnville Sewer District property adjacent to the boat launching ramp at Lincolnville Beach as shown on Tax Map One as Lot eighty-seven A.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any, anything else, any questions, concerns? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number fourteen, Penobscot Park Update. David, how's it going down there? Good, I think. The grass keeps growing, we keep mowing. The Board, we've got the handrails in, or handrail installed up to the steps to the beach. You have some pricing in your packet regarding roofing materials for the picnic structures. We've got a pile of wood posts ready to install, the post, replacement post, we just don't have the contractor going yet. But he's all lined up, it's just a matter of us getting to the top of the list. We'll be replacing the border around the stone area underneath those as well. And then do stain and do the roof if we can figure out what we want to put on for the roof. Folks from Viking recommended not putting metal roof on it due to its saltwater environment and not completely square. And we have a price in there for you. Approximate price and everything, just so you know, with building materials is, is today's price if you're ordering it today. Tomorrow it's going to be different. It may not be higher, but it's going to be different. But it gives you the relative proportion of one to the other. So we, I guess at this moment, our thoughts is you ought to decide between nice asphalt shingle or a nice cedar shingle and so we can pull the trigger and get it ordered and get it on.
Well, I personally, it's great to have three estimates there. That's good. And I think the, my, my personal opinion on the advice from, from Vikings, hey, they're in the business too. So I think this is a no-brainer as to which way we should go. It's good to hear that we're making progress down there. I like the, the, the sign looks good, the, the handrail looks good. And we move forward.
I, I agree. I'd go with asphalt any day of the week because it's so much cheaper. However, I got a question though. Is this price of fourteen fifty, is that for the fifteen year, the twenty year? What, what gear, what quality of shin, asphalt shingles are we getting?
Probably the thirty year.
I don't know.
We're probably going to buy an architectural grade twenty-five or thirty year shingle because then they'll be good for fifteen.
Okay, so, so we're not cheaping out on, on the asphalt.
No, we're not going to put at the least expensive free tack shingle we can possibly find at my doghouse.
Okay, good to know.
Unless you want to still, and then just.
No, no, no.
Get onto that too.
I would, I would entertain a motion on that.
I move that the town proceed, proceed with the re-roofing of picnic shelters at Penobscot Park with asphalt singles.
Second. Moved and seconded. Is there anything else before we vote on that? On this part of that? All seconded. Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. David, do you want to speak to the rest of?
If I can find, if I can find my notes. Uh, the other portion is what we're, what the Board wishes to do with the gate. And if there's going to be any seasonality to it or hours of the day and where are the mindset now that? And where are the mindset now that we should open it and secure it open like we do all our other parks and public spaces? And post the hours and go from there.
Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Just that I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, last meeting, I kinda, I remember our conversation on this issue. Being that we can't, the board can't, the town can't anticipate all possible things that, that could go wrong. And consequently, this is kind of an experiment, ongoing experiment, and the best way might, to move forward, might be to leave the gates open as is suggested here. I, I think that's how we look.
Start out with that way and revisit it if it becomes, if it gets out of control or whatever. What do you think about that, Steve?
I think it's the only prudent way we can move forward with it. And there's definitely concerns of some neighbors down there, but I think it's, um, for all the folks in town and potential parking issues in the law or anything, I think it's just the smart way to go.
David, do you have anything else on that with, with us? With, I, I cannot remember what our conversation was the last time we were down there about that particular subject. We were all on board.
There was a little bit of this way, that way, hire somebody, don't hire somebody, and.
Yeah, but.
We're just trying to push you to make a decision, what you wanna do.
Yeah, get it over. Okay, um, if there's, you know, other, you may have some.
What's that?
Interested parties.
Oh, okay.
I would ask the board how they feel about.
Sure.
Sure, okay, yeah, absolutely, um, the gentleman in the back there, if you'd like to come to the podium and just introduce yourself and where you live.
Will do.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Good evening, I'll be quick, but give an Irish guy a microphone, you never know. My name's Dan Leary and I'm at twenty-eight thirteen Atlantic Highway, right next to the park, I mean, I, I mean, you can't, you can't get more abutting than our property. So, um, one thing relative to the gate is, and I've voiced this before, it's leaving the gate open twenty-four seven is a bad idea. I mean, and I'm not really sure, um, the alternatives that were contemplated, um, because it seems that there may be some ways that people would open and close the gate, maybe, maybe, maybe it costs a small fee. So it seems to me that there's dollars being spent, and money's being spent, there's budget being allocated. Uh, I'm not quite exactly sure how the decisions are made of, well, we, this is worth spending money on, this isn't. But, uh, having that gate accessible, or the gate open, especially in the evening time, nighttime, and I've voiced this before, of the park, uh, having little to no visibility from the road and, you know, what could happen, uh, in the back of that park and, uh, you know, it just, it just seems like a, uh, an idea that uh, starting out with it open and then say, okay, now here's the problem, now we have to close, it seems backwards to me. Uh, that it just seems like it'd be more prudent, probably more safe, probably more, uh, well, I don't know, uh, friendly, if you will, if, uh, if, if it did the other way around, if started with the gate being closed, uh, find, you know, the, the people who might be able to open and close the gate at designated time, uh, and then go from there, have the participation in the, you know, the community involved. So that'd be one point. The other thing that I would, well, this, that, that would make my other point relatively moot. I guess the other thing is, uh, I guess, uh, I'm not really sure what other, the other decisions were made, uh, relative to the last time we're together, there was a laundry list, I think, uh, David had fourteen or fifteen items on his list, so I'm not really sure which ones were, um, uh, recommended, which, which way the recommendations go, other than what you've described so far. So I guess I can hold here and find out what else has been decided or not decided, if that makes sense.
Yeah, uh, to, to your first point, Dan?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, about the gate.
Yeah.
Uh, I believe we realized that, uh, because we don't have a police force here, uh, in town, that should the gate be closed at whatever time, seven PM, sunset, whatever time, and there's still somebody back there, we don't have, we can't, we don't have anybody to enforce the rules, right? Should there be a confrontation with somebody who's back there, with the gate closed? We can't ask somebody to say, a volunteer or a citizen to say, enforce this rule and have a, and confront this person. We realize that would be a problem. Am I making sense here?
You're, you're suggesting that if there, if it, if it had a close time.
Yeah.
And there was a vehicle in the, uh, in the park, and so this is gonna be, its closing time's gotta be locked in.
Yeah.
So the person who is responsible for opening or closing the gate would, you know, suggest like it, kind of move your car or whatever, um, then they would be, there's nobody to call to, to enforce that.
Right, if that, and if that person said, no, I'd rather not, um, move my car, I'd rather not obey the rules, what's that person? Us asking that person to enforce the rules and, and confront that, you know, confront that individual, is this, it's too big a, too big a ask of a person that's not a police officer.
Well, that would, that would be an interesting thing, is that, that any rule or anything that goes on in the park, or any, any, anything that happens in the park, if there's a, if there's an issue with it, there's really nobody to call, which is even more concerning for a buddy neighbor. That kinda opens up a whole laundry list of things that like, who do, who do I call if there's an issue?
Currently law, currently enforcing law is, goes to, uh, the county, the state? Am I, am I overstating that, oversimplifying that?
That's where it goes.
Yeah, I don't think I am, yeah, yeah. So, yeah, there, there is someone to call, but there's not a town employee to enforce the, to, to employ, employ, to enforce that law, I guess.
Okay, so, uh, I guess I'm missing a connection. So if there is an issue.
Yeah.
Who would I call for any issue?
County, the, the.
The sheriff?
County sheriff, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Guess it depends on the issue.
Is that not the answer?
Depends on the issue, Dan.
Right. What I'm saying is, if it's the sheriff, for example, what would be the problem if, uh, if there is someone who's in the park after dark, or, or, again, off the rules, right? And they were, and a person came over and said, gee, your car's here, we're closing up, can you leave, and the person, uh, if they were, if in fact they were being obnoxious about it, or, uh, they could say, no, that person would be able to call a sheriff or whatever and say, hey, we got a problem down here. And the sheriff, I think, would be responding, right? That's just like if it was any other issue.
I think it would be, number one, I think it would be tough to find someone who would want to enforce that. You know, I, if, a buddy property owners don't wanna be that type of police, so to speak, yeah. If they, if they did, I think we'd have more volunteers for it.
But, but I guess it's a twenty-four hour park.
I think our thought was that, um, we were gonna try to build on the honor system to begin with, much like the trash and walking your dogs in the park or not. Um, and I think that fell into that category as well.
So, I guess I would, I would suggest or recommend that maybe we go on the honor system and have, if there, if in fact there is someone who is willing to open up the gate at specified times, to give that a shot. And if in fact, the problem does occur, what you're describing, then you kinda go, well, you know, we can't do this, so we'll then leave the gates open. It's just, it's just a flip of the, uh, of the decision. You know, see, the, the issue, I think the thing that is, I, I guess we're in a relatively unique situation, 'cause nobody is as close to that parking lot as our home. Uh, the other, the other item on the agenda last time was a privacy fence. I don't know where, I don't know, or some kind of a privacy barrier between the parking lot and our home. And I don't know where, uh, that decision is, if that was decided, or if we have a, a recommendation for that, but this is like just a very unique situation, we're right at the parking lot, so people are gonna be in there after hours, or people are gonna be in there making noise, there's, you know, it, it really doesn't impact negatively, really, hardly anybody else in this town. So, I kind of, uh, I'm kind of urging or coming at it from a unique position, and I guess Peggy, you're in a similar, oh, I guess Peggy's in a similar situation, 'cause she's only a little bit further down than we are. But the, I'm just kinda coming at it from a situation like, you know, there's, there's probably only one, one voice here that has got this issue in the town. And I'm not sure that the, if there's budget enough to fix roofs and, you know, stairwells and cut lawns and everything else, then I'm just not sure that, uh, uh, we can't find a way to kinda have a safety issue relative, in my opinion, a safety issue relative to closing a fence on a, on a period of time and giving that a shot and see if it'll work. Um, and again, I, I totally understand the idea that if I was a person, or anybody's a person, opening and closing that gate, that if on a routine basis, or even more than once, uh, you know, somebody was in there going, you know, I'm not gonna leave here, you can't tell me what to do, and so on and so forth. If that would happen frequently, I would be a hundred percent with you guys, to be like, yeah, you can't, that's just a, a person who's, you know, just doing something almost as a favor to the town to, uh, uh, you know, to do that. So, I mean, I, I understand the position, I'm not, I'm not necessarily arguing with your, with the, uh, with that part of it, I'm just kinda sitting there going, jeez, you know, that's, it is all well and good, but I, I don't see a, you know, being sitting right next to the thing, I don't see how that really helps of the situation at work. You know, at least if we know the gate's locked, you know, okay, well, at least at nighttime, it's not gonna be a problem, and during the daytime, it's a park, so we're gonna be noise and this and that going on, and that's the fun part of being in a park. It's just not as fun at, you know, two o'clock in the morning.
Sure.
But again, it's, uh, anyway, I think that's, as far as that particular topic is concerned, it's.
So, um, you referenced a privacy fence, and I know there was a quick conversation about that, but isn't there already fence there?
Well, there's a, there's a, um, a post and rail fence.
Oh, there's a split rail fence?
Split rail fence, yeah, I mean, it's like.
Oh, I thought there was a couple of panels out towards the roof of the privacy fence.
I don't think so.
No.
No, there's, there's a split rail, and then is there some vegetation, predominantly weed, weed and vegetation in between? That's what's between the, that's because it's, so it's our, it's, it's the park, it's the parking lot, then we have the split rail fence, and there's some, you know, some old trees and some things there, and then it's our property. So, it's kind of like, and it's just a, there's really no, there's really no noise barrier there, you know, so it's kind of just, it's just vegetation, so. And again, that's probably one of those just unique situations of, wow, it's, you're right next to the parking lot, all right, and.
Is there anything else? Is there, is there anything else from the audience? Dan, are you, are you finished?
Um, I believe so, um, 'cause all of it was kinda revolving around there relative to set hours, or, uh, you know, if there was a gate, we were just, uh, if in fact we were closing the gate, we were just, uh, concerned, uh, 'cause we see it now, of people parking in front of the gate. And now, um, people go visit the park even though the park's not open, and so you get, you get it in volumes of, you know, a couple a day or whatever, which, which again, this is not a complaint from my, like, okay, but, but, that's not a big deal. But when you're frequent, if you, once the park's open, kinda anticipating that, frequency would increase, and then if the gate's closed, and you put, uh, gee, if you have more than one or two cars there, then you're gonna start crowding into the street. And it just goes back to the conversation we had last time, where, um, you know, that, it, it's, the turn into that park is just gonna be, it's gonna be really interesting over time to see how that happens. And I, and I'm pretty sure, and I'm not sure, but I'm pretty sure that, uh, as a town, we're not gonna be able to put turn lanes in there, or a signal, or things of that nature, so it's gonna be a little bit of, let's see how it goes, but, uh, if you, if you have that kind of, you know, the, the parking outside that gate, it just tends to kinda get a little bit bigger, and again, I'm more concerned about, you see it now, uh, even without an issue, and, or without the park being open, so, uh, you know, as that, as that increases, it's just another one of those things. And again, and I, I guess my recommendation would there be, if we were closing the gate, when the gate's closed, there would be a sign on there, there'd be no parking in front of the gate, or something of that nature, so. At least you get, you, you take that, uh, shot, you know, give it a shot to avoid that. And that to me is purely, uh, purely a safety thing, I mean, it's just purely like, you know, you're taking a, a tough situation and not make it tougher. And I think that's, those are the points that I had. But thank you for allowing me to give a shot.
Oh, no, yeah. No, thank you.
And I do wanna say that also, just what we were, the last time I was here, is we are, uh, my wife and I are huge fans of having a great park. You know, that's not, you know, we're, my, my points are, are purely just more of a practicality. And, uh, a little bit of like, okay, let's, uh, you know, let's, let's enjoy the park and just have a little bit of a, you know, a few things that'll just be a little bit helpful, so, um, just wanted you guys to know that. And thanks for, uh, thanks for the time.
No, thank you, thanks a lot.
Go ahead. Thank you.
So, I'm Peggy Smith, I live at twenty-eight oh seven Atlantic Highway, so I'm not an actual abutter, but just about as close as you can be without being an actual abutter of the park. Um, I was a little surprised when it said something about, are we doing this seasonally? 'Cause I thought there was already decided that the park would be closed during certain times of the year, so I was just taken aback by that. I have offered to open and close the park for free, I'm not expecting to be paid, uh, and I had three, um, requests. Uh, one is that we create a certain time, not half hour before sunrise and half hour after sunset. I might be able to qualify for that senior citizen discount on my property taxes, and that's too much commitment in the summertime for me. So, I was suggesting seven to seven, that I would open it by seven in the morning and not close it before seven PM in the evening. It was interesting, I hadn't really thought about the, I, I am not gonna confront anybody. I'm not even gonna go look for somebody, 'cause they could be anywhere along that beach, I'm not gonna spend my evening trying to find somebody. But I know at the state park in Camden, there's a sign, if your car is still here at this and such a time, it's gonna be there all night, because the gate gets locked. And nobody comes to try to find you. So that's one strategy. And the other strategy is, I just wouldn't lock the gate that night, and we start to count, how many times are people leaving their car in the parking lot after our, our documented closing time? So, it wouldn't be about me confronting anyone, but we could get data of how many people are ignoring we close at such and such a time. This is just a strategy, I'm not attached to this, I have plenty to do in my day, I don't need to do this. I was just trying to help the town move forward with getting the park open. And then, just that if occasionally I'm not around, that the town would find somebody to do it when I'm not around, although I'm around most of the time. So, I will just tell you that there are already soda cans in the park, and dog waste, that's not, does not belong to my dogs, which I've been attending to. So, just so you know, that even though the park is not officially open, the issues are already, you know, it's not big time, but they're there.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Is there anybody else? Do you have something? No? So, he, here we are.
Yeah.
Um, I'd really like to hear the other two board members' opinions on this before we go any further with this. And I know we wanted to get this open as soon as possible so the public can enjoy that. I'm hearing we've got a volunteer, if we set the time seven to seven, um, but if it's outside of that, it doesn't sound like that's available. Wha- what are your thoughts?
One's a question for David. What other places in town do we have that we have posted hours?
Briesmer Park. Be the only one that I can, that immediately pops, pops into mind. And you can't park overnight at the beach. And you can't park overnight at the beach, that's posted, but define overnight, you know, if you're down there watching the moonrise over Alsboro, you know, you're not staying all night. But if you're down there with a motorhome overnight, or, yeah.
I guess I, I look at it from the perspective of the, all of the taxpayer, some number of taxpayers in the town wanted to have this park. It was, it's, and though we have neighbors which are very important and directly affects, uh, those folks, um, we need to be thinking about all of the, all of our taxpayers, all of our citizens in town. And the we have one location, I guess, Briesmer, that, that we don't have issues in, it's, that's totally different situation. We have neighbors that live right next to that man's stand, though, um, but, uh, there's, there's not, there hasn't been issues there. Um, so it was in that vein that I feel that I, I lean towards opening the place up and, and, uh, I don't like to say anything from a see what happens perspective, 'cause it's not really, it's, I'm more optimistic about the, the people that are gonna go there, that we're not gonna have issues, just like we got with Briesmer. That's why we live in Briesmer. Um, so that's the way I'd like, I'd like to, those are my brothers I perceive, and I would have to, that is, they talk about here.
Well, I don't know, both, both Dan and Peggy, uh, to me, rate, uh, show that, uh, if we're, if this is going to be an experiment to see how it works, as Dan said, why not try it closed? If there's a problem, we have a volunteer there who won't engage. And, um, if we can get that in writing somehow, so our liability is covered, does it work? Uh, then I would feel comfortable, uh, in closing the, doing seven to seven, closing the gates, if somebody's posting a sign that says your car's gonna stay there after seven, if you're still there. And, um, if it hap, then, if it happens once, twice, three times, we pick a number, he says, the heck with this, this ain't working, we're just gonna open it up. I don't know, um, I don't wanna be in a situation where, uh, I've forgotten the last name of Dan, but where Dan and his, his wife are in a situation where they weren't, it gets so, it gets so bad, they ha, they feel as if they have to take action beyond, or even including Carlin County, and waiting for that. So I like the idea of, if we could work on an arrangement with Peggy, if she wants to do this, volunteer. And if we can get it, like I said, in writing, that she's just gonna walk away, and if somebody's there, close the gate, and, and we secondly have a sign that says, your car's staying here now, if you're there, um, I'd like to try that and pick, and like I said, if it gets to be a problem, two, three, four, five times, it's a problem in the course of the season, then we might wanna, we would wanna rethink this. That's, that's where I'm leaning.
Thank you. I, I personally would like to have the, uh, would have liked to have the other two
Sure.
select representatives, um, opinion on that, like to have their input. Uh, so, in my opinion, I feel we should table this to the next
Sounds good, yeah.
To the next meeting.
Yeah.
Um, but I also wanna get this place open, you know?
Yep, so, so do I.
I wanna get it open.
Yeah, of course.
I, I have in the back of my mind that it's not gonna be as bad as we think it is, uh, if it's open. Um, but I also have a lot of respect for the people who, uh, put me here and, um, helped us get that park. It's a, it's a, it's a great resource for the town, so I wanna do what I can to make sure it's done with everybody's thought on the table. Um, so I think if we could put this off, if, 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 uh, you, Steve, and you might agree, we'll have David put this off until the next meeting, um, and we'll make a decision next meeting. We'll go from there.
Sounds good, sounds like, uh
I have a question for you.
Okay, yeah.
It's after your request. Uh, my request is that if you decide to leave the gates open all the time, that we, as neighbors, receive guidance on what to do if people are camping down there, or if people are, um, playing loud music after a certain time of night.
Yeah.
What do you want us to do, I would like to know.
Okay.
Okay?
We, and, and we'll, we'll make sure that we discuss that before our vote, uh, in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All I got. David, can we put that on the next?
We can do whatever you want to do.
Thank you, my friend. Okay, this, this will be it.
Yeah, well, this is just, yeah, this, oh, this is just a clarification, is the, uh, other items that we had, uh, there was two meetings ago, again, I think there was a list of fourteen or fifteen things, is, uh, have they been decided upon? And if so, is there somewhere I could look at to say, yes, these are decided, these have not?
The item, it's my understanding, uh, as I remember it, the items are being taken care of, uh, as we speak, which we have budgeted, had budgeted for prior to knowing what actually needed to be done down there. Our safety items, um, to keep people safe when they're down there. Um, other things are gonna have to be pushed off to another year or when we've got money in the budget to do that.
There should be a list of those, uh, in the minutes, Dan, but I don't think the minutes are online as yet.
Okay, yeah, I don't think I, I didn't see it online, that's why I was looking for it in the minutes, okay.
Excuse me, would, would, would Dan be able to swing by the office and pick up a, a hard copy of that?
Yeah. Um, I'm gonna take a while, I guess, I'd say the, uh, privacy fence isn't on there or something like that, the privacy barrier.
No, no decision was made to either thumbs up or thumbs down, that it just
All right, uh, I guess what my question then would be, or my request would be is, um, uh, you know, if it's not on there, I know it's not gonna be on there before the park opens, I get that, 'cause it, and I agree with you guys, gotta get this park open. So, uh, but I would like to, uh, if there's a way to do that, talk to whoever is involved here, 'cause there might be some way we can figure out how to get this thing done in one way, shape or form. And just to kind of, instead of just kind of, uh, you know, having it up and people kind of voting, yeah, we have it in the budget, no, we don't have it in the budget, it might be one of those things, if we can have a discussion about it, uh, with whoever. I don't, it doesn't have to be in a formal meeting like this, so we can kind of brainstorm some ideas, how I might be able to take care of the, uh, take care of the situation. Just, uh, just know how to do that, that'd be great, thanks.
Okay, moving along, next item on the agenda, confirm town clerk's appointment of election warden for November eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Where's everybody going?
This always happens.
Never state to the end.
Nice juicy stuff from her.
All that stuff's very good.
So there's a, the state's going to be conducting an election on November eighth, and an election warden needs to be appointed, and that's done by the town clerk, who's me. And I guess I, against my better judgment, wanna appoint myself election warden, and it needs to be confirmed by the municipal officer. So, if you wanna do it, I'll just go home at five o'clock.
Okay, thank you, David, um, it's pretty straightforward, uh, identitarian motion.
Well, I move that the board approve the town clerk's appointment of David Kenny as election warden for the November eighth, two thousand twenty-two election.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
I forgot to mention, yeah, I forgot to mention with, with thanks.
Oh, with thanks.